Thank you, welcome to meeting this evening. The council has on their tables just a simple front and back of a page of suggested agenda items for the August 13th meeting. So it looks like this, and then there's some issues on the back. As you can tell from the table, I've got a lot of handouts, so we'll slowly go through this. So if I can pay your indulgence and get started, we'll do that. For the August 13th meeting, of course, we're looking at awarding the residential commercial waste recycling bid, and we'll cover those numbers in a minute, or at least the bid specs, the bid tab that we have. We need council's permission to install some, at least one up to three lights within an alley parallel to Lloyd Avenue and Mary Street and Sixth Ward. As we relocated lights, the issue of access in the alley and the alley being dark, if we put these utility poles back there, we might be able to, well, we can, if all right, we need council's approval to do that. We would authorize West Penn to install them, and of course, we would pay that. The reason we're asking council to authorize that is because it really should be at your level that decision made. We don't typically light alleys, however, we do in some cases light the alleys, and we would like to consider that in the August meeting.
What's the cost per year?
I do not know what the cost for one to three additional streetlights would be.
Sell me on this, Alex. What's the compelling, you have a reason? We're repaying.
Well, I think, pardon me if I'm wrong, but I think it's, this is their, and I know we have this issue other places, but this is their only access in and out of their properties because of where they live. So maybe an alley, it is their basic throughway to their property.
They can't park on Lloyd Avenue, so.
Suck it.
Sorry.
In addition, when we relocated the services on what would be the western side of Lloyd Avenue and put the utility poles in that alley, we lit that up, and we do pay for that. Now, we relocated these utility poles into this alley, and, you know, a case may be made that there was a precedent set when that was done.
Was there any lights back here before?
No, not on the alley, but the utility poles were put back here. You know, they were installed.
We did the Phase Three of Lloyd Avenue in the back, and they put the utility poles up there, we had to put transformers on. So all they had to do was put the lights on. Now, I gave the city page the lights. We should be able to do that in the back. The poles, once we get 415 settled, we can take out the rest. The poles are in the back, will be in the back, and they have transformers on them. So all you gotta do is put the light on, just like we did over here, and it makes it very, very safe.
Has this been requested by the residents?
By the residents, yes. They've been with us a number of times on different occasions.
We were there. We were there.
What happened was, and what happened was, when the utility pole was relocated, West Penn, at that time Allegheny installed a light. One of the residents was upset because it affected their start date. West Penn slash Allegheny at the time removed the light. All the other residents, who thought it was a nice thing to have, it brought it to their attention, if you will, by having the light out there, that it was nice to have a light back there, wondered where the light went. And West Penn basically said, "We took it down, and we're not gonna install it until the city directs us to it." And so that's what we're looking for. If council wishes to direct the utility to do that, they would, and then we would pay the electric cost.
So they bring out the same amount of lights on Lloyd Avenue, now we have more lights on the alley?
You would eliminate the alley. Not necessarily the same amount of lights. It may only be two lights, it may be able to get by with one. There's a possibility of three, but I think two is the max. There would be one out, one light at the alley, crossway, I don't know if there's no names on our alleys, but there's two intersections of alleys. There's an alley paralleling Lloyd and Mary Street, and then there's two, you know, roads coming off, two alleys coming off of Lloyd Avenue, and you may put one on each end of those. Okay? So again, that's a potential to be on the agenda. The next thing, and I apologize for the way the bullet points worked up, but when you see planning and development, there should be an addition. Jim and I were just talking about a sewage module for the Adelphi Development. That's the last piece of the puzzle. Under police, we've discussed, so the police would have its own bullet, it's not a block under planning. The police would, we've discussed the civil service exam, and, you know, the changing of the criteria from eighty-five percent to seventy-five percent to be in line with national chief of police standards.
Have we filled the opening?
No, we still have an opening for the civil service exam.
I thought you had someone who was interested.
I'm doing, I thought I did, but he decided not to.
I've got a person to back up us off, I've been asking, you know, trying to get first.
You said that is, that's national, to go from eighty-five percent to seventy-five percent.
There's a standard, yeah, a standard with the, have the newspaper options. Currently, they have a bin that doesn't have a lid, and we often find on recycle days, ourselves chasing recyclables around the town, particularly on heavy wind days. So what we're proposing, or what the bidders are bid on, is providing every resident with one of those three carts. For the, for convenience sakes, they bid on the mid cart, the sixty-five gallon cart, and residents would have a choice to choose a thirty-five gallon or a ninety-five gallon cart. And again, they'll be able to put all that stuff in there. We also allow the bidders to, if residences didn't want to have to deal with stickers, they could, for an extra price, get a ninety-five gallon tote to put all of their garbage in. And so that's in there as well. I'm recommending, there's just a lot of details in these specs that the committee need again, and then make a formal recommendation at the council meeting of which would be chosen. I mean, there is a low number, obviously, but there's a lot of nuances, and they're policy related. Do you want to keep it in-house, do you want to outsource it? But recognize, they set the price of stickers on the outsourced, at least at the point it's bid now. So you'll see that price, for example, on page four or so, you'll see a price of what they're proposing for stickers. But again, that's, that's part of the environment of outsourcing. The outsourcing would have franchise fee. Like the cable company, the franchise fee is designed to enable them to have a monopoly amongst our customers here in town, and for that right, they pay a franchise fee. So that's something we've discussed, I think, a number of times. You'll, you'll note that that's part of option A. It will be billed as an item on each customer's bill, is the way we foresee it. So they'll see the franchise fee. But again, these are lots of details that we'll have to think through. I think John is here tonight from Allied Republic. You've had the contract for five-plus years.
Ten years.
Ten years. And he just wanted to make himself available. They are the apparent low bidder on, on option A. Interstate would be the apparent low bidder for option B.
Can we ask a question?
I don't, I don't, I'm sorry. My question really is, I think there was a requirement in the bid specs that you stayed within a certain percentage as between residential and commercial. Do you recall that?
Yes.
This is John. And your percentages are fifty-eight point four-nine and forty-one point five-one percent. That's within the requirements that we had set with the plus and minus.
Plus and minus, one percent, yes.
I noticed that on caller C, they went outside that requirement.
Yeah, quite a bit. They, they, for option A, were seventy-two percent on the residential, twenty-seven percent on commercial.
And so they were hitting the residential theoretically heavier than what we had set in the specs.
And that would be true for caller C on option B. They were, again, a little bit variant from the required fifty.
Both, in both cases, they were.
Correct.
The other thing, I guess it really is my question, but Alex, in this bid calculation, you had, oh, okay, this one does have a dollar and fifty cent per sticker price.
Yeah, that was, that was the bid, the bid document says the maximum we could charge would be a dollar fifty. That was the maximum.
And I guess my question is, if we move off that maximum, if we would say Francisco to a dollar a sticker, then I think we would take your figures and be able to negotiate a new total top price. They weren't figured in the bid, though. Yes, they were.
That, that number, if I understand correctly, a dollar fifty was the number that was used in the calculation of the bid?
There's no, if you look at these on the price sheet, there is no extension on the price sheet.
Okay.
In other words, it wasn't included as part of the total figure that, you know, that is reflected in their bid.
I don't know.
Yeah, none of them were, and that's why this, I think that's why the city said the maximum would be a dollar.
That, that figured not in either of your calculations at, on the bid price?
It's, I did the bid exactly how I thought I was supposed to do it. So I don't know how you're, you're calculating it out, but the way the bid sheet was, was put together, we were told that, you know, the maximum price for a bag would be a dollar fifty. That was set by the city. That wasn't our, you know.
I understand, I understand, but your five-year bid option is four million seven hundred and fifteen thousand. Does that include the price of stickers?
No, that, he's, he referenced the other one. Their bid was three million five hundred and forty-six thousand eight hundred and forty-five on option A.
On option?
A.
A, no. No, option B, the city does, does the stickers, we're not involved in the price. So whatever you see, you know, option B, there is no difference, that's the city's.
Okay, so actually, option B, as far as Green Ridge is concerned, I think there's, you're charging additional five hundred and thirty-nine thousand.
Option B.
I think what he's doing, John, is he's netting the difference between your price and option B, and subtracting option A, and that's where he's coming up with that, that figure.
I, I don't have that in front of me, so I can't tell you.
Want to look at it?
Yeah, this is the bid tab, and I think what he's doing is using, is subtracting that.
Yeah, so there is additional, yeah, we're gonna see additional, additional revenues from the stickers, that's correct.
Okay, so that, that's why option B is, is more than option A?
Correct.
Okay. And those are the correct figures?
It's the way the bid document is set up, absolutely.
This is a free call for council benefit. The current prices of stickers are about thirty-three cents. Under the pay-as-you-throw, thinking, that is not a high enough price to incentivize or to discourage people from throwing, you know, garbage away. For example, if the thought was, there's a, an elderly person on fixed income who throws out one bag every two weeks, let's say, because they're very frugal, they don't generate a lot of waste, under the current system, they're, they're still subsidizing the big throw. There's really no discouragement with the price that we've set. Under a true pay-as-you-throw, the idea is you have a low base price for the low generator, they don't buy a lot of stickers, they don't pay a lot of base price. They don't therefore subsidize the other customers within the system who do throw a lot away. So that's sort of the thinking. I mean, you know, to have stickers, it'd be more than a nuisance. You have to price them in a way that hits your, achieve, your, your stated goal, which is to have people on fixed income not subsidize, for example, you know, people on, you know, who went and threw a lot of waste away. So that's sort of the thinking. What we did with the bid spec was, we set ceilings, a ceiling they could go up to over the bid contract. Now, the different hollers could set a price up to that ceiling or below, and, and we gave them that, that option to do that.
I have another question, John. I noticed on your ninety-five gallon cart, your unit price is four dollars and thirty-nine cents. Is that four dollars and thirty-nine cents per month?
That's per collection.
Per collection?
Right. So per week?
Per week.
Right.
Do you think that maybe, if we have a committee meeting, that he could come?
That would be great.
Sit in, and we can maybe iron all this stuff out, or since we're gonna have to have a committee meeting.
We have way of it anyway, so.
Maybe we invite him to the committee meeting?
Yeah, either, either we have one and then invite him, or we, you know.
We, if we're going to invite one, we have to invite all three until we make any decision and award a contract. Can't invite just one.
All right, then we need to have a meeting first, and then fuck up from there, from there.
Right.
Just to make one comment about the painters and about the bags and stickers, as, as I think Alex already pointed out, this is a very incentive program, and the idea is that you, your baggage sheets will, will substantially go down, having that much to be able to put recycling in every week. Your baggage sheets will cut ten, twenty, thirty, forty percent, you would have that. I mean, you talk about newspapers, all your spaghetti boxes, cereal boxes, crapper boxes, beer boxes, shoe boxes, toothpaste boxes, newspapers, magazines.
Do you do pizza boxes?
We do pizza boxes, the lids.
Just the lids?
Yes, the bottom.
You know, there's some municipalities that refuse to tech pizza boxes.
The lids, yeah.
To recycle.
If, if large pizza gets in there, that's not big, it has to do with the oil.
Right.
My whole point, my, what I'm trying to make premise is, going to the page, the page code program, that works in that. You have incentive, you've given them, it's not only you're taking, you, you're incentivizing, you've got them the proper vehicle in which to do recycling, and that's, that's the cart. That's really how that works.
I've gotta ask one more question.
No, I mind, Richard, I'm just saying, I think we're gonna have a lot more questions.
Yeah, okay, you have, this, you have a unit price at ten dollars and sixty cents.
Yes.
That's per month.
Yes.
Then, when you mentioned the ninety-five gallon cart price, it's four dollars and thirty-nine cents a week.
That's how that's, the bid sheet is put together. Remember, you get, you get charged for no bags then. You can, you can, you know, if you just get the ten twenty-five, you get the bag price for the garbage, and you get a recycling bin for recycling.
And one more question. Can you get a sixty-five gallon cart and have a different price?
For recycling or for garbage?
Uh, for garbage.
That wasn't part of the, that, that would, someone could do that, it's off, off the price sheet, but, you know.
Couldn't you do it?
We could do it, absolutely could do it, yes.
All right. That's all I have.
Thanks, Richard, we got plenty of questions. So now.
Can I ask one question? Do we have a separate bin for recyclables and the garbage? If you tell, everybody in the town will have one of those bins for recyclables. Okay, anything, you know, cans, bottles, anything.
Everything but garbage.
If you want, if you want a bin for garbage, you can get a bin for garbage.
Otherwise, our bags and stickers.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
We also, just to note, you can have bulky items picked up every week, those a lot of stickers as well, is the way we're envisioning it. So you'd have to pay a different price for a bulky sticker, if you will, and, and again, that's another nuance. Lots of details in there. The next real needy item, if you will, for discussion, is the whole idea of parking Since July of two thousand and ten, the issue of our parking garage and our, our maintenance has been discussed at great length. And we're getting to the point where, you know, council needs to consider enacting an ordinance related to a new rate structure for both the parking meters, parking passes, and the way we do fines in this town. Parking Authority has had a chance to consider these as well, and they're making a recommendation. The recommendation is as follows. Under the multi-page spreadsheet that begins with the inventory, on page, I believe it's page seven, they're recommending this option be chosen for parking meters on street and in the, in the, in the parking lots. And what they're proposing is, for example, if you plug a quarter into a nine-hour meter, you'll get fifty minutes. Okay? That's where the rate would go. That, that's a little different than what it is now, as you can imagine. Under the current rate, your quarter gets you ninety minutes. So again, you put a quarter in a nine-hour meter, and that gets you fifty minutes. That gives you a chance to orient to the spreadsheet. That's in the upper left-hand corner. The rest of the spreadsheet is a lot of detail, and what would it look like if you parked all day, paid with quarters? What would it look like if you parked twenty-one days in a month, considering not so many days you're actually in the office? And how does that translate? You know, so, so you can get an idea of, of where this is going. And then there's a little bit of, again, more interesting, hopefully useful information for council on the bottom. The Parking Authority also recommends on the passes on page nine, option one. These, what we're, what we're looking at doing is creating a number of new categories related to passes. For example, rates related to residential rates, people who live in the downtown business district that are kind of stuck in what they do, and they get tickets. Some of them have accumulated quite a bit of tickets over the, over the years. So anyways, we would sell, for example, decals for them, and that gives you an idea. They're recommending option one. So currently, the regular pass in town, most of our passes, nearly about two hundred or so of them, they're thirty dollars, and the new rate would be forty dollars. Gives you an idea where those rates are at. The last thing the Parking Authority recommends, and again, you have all three options, this is on page ten. This is related to the idea of violations or fines for various parking infractions. They're recommending option three. As the person who has to deal with everybody every day complaining about their parking ticket, I'm not sure I like that number a whole lot, but, for example, under overparking, if you overpark in, in the city of Lutro, you pay three dollars. And what they're recommending is that that would go to ten. As a person who has to deal with that every day, I like option one, which is going, taking it to four dollars. But again, that's something for council to decide. There's lots of discretion. You can take it as a package, and then begin to discuss it in the August meeting, and then dissect it to say, "I recommend handicap parking fine be this," or "I recommend nine-hour meter be that," or "I recommend," you know, however. But what I tried to do is give you a, a pretty good way of looking at it, and plus you have the Tim Haas tables, which is a front and back.
What's a two-hour meter?
Okay, so let's go back and look at that together. This is on page seven. Okay? And the two-hour, they're the yellow decal meters in town. If you throw twenty-five cents, if you slug a quarter in it, you'll get thirty minutes. Currently, the way it works, you get sixty minutes.
You're doubling that.
Correct. And you'll be able to see that.
Where is that?
As you look down at the, the spreadsheet on, on page seven, I'm showing you what the rate is in, in numerical form, and then percentage form. So for example, if you wanted to take that yellow meter, and you could take it all the way down, you could see you're asking doubling, yeah, it's a hundred percent increase. The, the way meters are calibrated are that nickels, under the current system, dimes and quarters get you different times, even on the same meter. It's not like a price per penny, it's not uniform. The idea is that, you know, the quarter gets you a little more than, you know, per minute than a nickel or a dime, and that's why there's a little bit of a nuance. So it's not, it's not like across the board, there's one uniform price per minute in this town.
Where else would be doubled rates?
Look at that spreadsheet. That spreadsheet, the half-hour rates goes up, they go up fifty percent, and the nine-hour go up eighty percent. But because of the number of meters in town, it kind of averages out to about a seventy-five percent increase.
But the two-hour meter, you're doubling?
Yes, sir.
That's, that's the recommendation.
Add a quarter. Add a dime, it goes up sixty percent. Again, it's very confusing.
I understand, but.
And so it's not a doubling, so, so you gotta look at it.
Twenty-five, twenty-five cents, you only get a half hour instead of an hour. That's their recommendation? Is that right?
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I mean, again, nickels, dimes, and quarters get you different amounts in different meters.
So if you wanna buy a loaf of bread, I guess you just go put a nickel in, and you'll have enough time to wait for a loaf of bread, and not pay fifty cents?
At, at a half-hour meter, you get fifteen minutes for your dime, you'll get five minutes for your nickel.
Use Pango or Trac.
Yeah.
How's Pango?
Anybody that.
About a minute.
Anybody that has, I just did it today, and I was actually in a meeting, and I got a note saying that my parking meter expired at eight oh seven, because I was in a meeting at seven thirty, and I, you know, I logged on to Pango and said, "I'm parking," and, and so then I just.
Extended the talk.
Reextended it, and when I was done, I didn't even use a quarter, it was like the next turn, twelve cents. It's, it's wonderful.
Yeah, it is, it's a great system.
But you have to tell the iPhone or a joy to do it, but.
You have to call.
Or you call.
Don't you have, didn't you say you have it?
Yeah.
Richard, you park downtown all the time, you should be, you should be leading by example. Well, well, wait a minute now, Pango does charge seventeen percent.
It doesn't charge you. It doesn't charge you.
It, it charges the city. So there, ergo, you have to get in seventeen percent.
Ergo, we don't have to have somebody collecting that money or servicing that meter.
Well, I can tell you what, let's see in two years, if we still have, we still have things.
Okay, so what else, Alex? We have to, this, we're gonna have to, like, look at this and talk about this some more. Are we, we're not expecting to, are we gonna vote on anything in August?
If you'd like, we can do it September.
I mean, I'd like to look at this, though.
It's going to have to be by order, so.
And you can, and the mayor, the mayor's certainly free, I think, if you want to, again, use a committee to.
I've looked at it, let it go over and over, I'm gonna go with the Parking Authority.
Kind of what I'm leaning towards, but.
That's it, 'cause we kinda told, you know, we're in this mess because the council never wants their way, always helping back.
That's right.
This is their recommendation, we should let them do it.
Well, if they can buy it, and you have, the Parking Authority doesn't control the streets, it has nothing to do with the street meters.
But these are due reflective meters, both on the streets and in the lots.
Right, but how much have you raised the lot price, like, for instance, the new lot that we just built?
It just went over with, yeah.
What, what's the recommendation here for the parking pass?
Well, what we've looked at for the parking pass is, you have reserved spaces, regular pass spaces, and let's get to that.
Basically, it's ten bucks more a month, is what he has in there, right?
So he took it from.
The regular pass.
Right now, when we sold reserved spaces, we sold them at forty-five, we're recommending they go to fifty-five.
Exactly.
For reserved spaces.
For reserved space in the parking garage.
But the regular spaces, which the predominantly thirty-dollar ones, will not be forty.
Would go to forty dollars, correct.
So you're only raising them thirty-three percent?
Correct.
Twenty thirty-three point three, twenty-two point two, thirty percent, a hundred percent, a hundred percent.
Yeah, those are related to.
Seventy-two percent increase across the board on it. It needs to be done.
I'm not, I'm not arguing about the parking garage, I think that's what we need to be hiring.
That's everywhere across the board.
Because that's not gonna pay for the bond issue, which is gonna be two hundred and twenty thousand dollars to redo that garage. So you're not gonna have enough money from these rates to pay for that parking garage repair, which Mr. Bolinari wanted.
So you're saying you wanna make it more?
Yes, for the garage, absolutely.
I think as residents, there's certainly a lot to digest, and it might not be a bad idea to have a committee or some other meeting opportunity. We certainly talked about these a lot, I think, when we passed the bond issue, there were projections given, and they were very similar to what these rate increases would, we think, could, could get as far as revenue. We, I think, most of us had the conversation and agreed that the garage is unable to pay for itself, that it's a parking system, that the garage is part of the system, and it, and it provides, an essential part of the system, about a third of the spaces, but it's, it's together with the rest of them. And if we price it too high, and we keep the lot prices too low, then we kind of priced ourselves, shot ourselves a foot. For example, if we kept the lot prices at thirty, and I doubled, or I take it to seventy in the garage, somebody might say, "Well, I'm gonna leave the garage empty." I mean, it's just that price determines.
There has to be a detriment to parking on the street when you could park in the garage, so that we don't have people that work eight hours a day, taking the prime parking spaces for people that wanna stop in for twenty minutes and, and get something, and that's what was happening.
I agree with that.
Yeah.
Perhaps maybe we should eliminate some of the parking spaces on the street, especially on welling street, and they are put in just as a temporary measure, I thought.
On-street spaces are found to be most convenient by most business patrons and customers. I mean, they're on-street spaces.
I also think we can see what happens once the garage gets back, and we'll see over time, once parking, what areas of town aren't being parked in.
Actually, the way the city code reads, as we're reading it today, is that the city manager, as it relates to our Parking Authority, can, can adjust rates and space, spaces. For example, we could decide to have the whole garage just be reserved only, and set that at fifty-five dollars. I mean, there's, there's flexibility within how we do it. I mean, there's, there's, there's flexibility within how we do it. But what we're asking you to do, if the council, is to agree in total to rate increases on, on the streets and the lots, meters, passes, and fines.
So we want on-street parking higher than the garage parking?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, yeah.
Yeah, because there are prime spots and ops. You guys just, that's a great job of getting this people there and doing it. And then Mr. Garage, they're like, now they have all this stuff right in front of the buildings that go into.
Well, we have to, yeah.
And you want those flipped.
You gotta try to push them so that you have a rate on the street.
You want them to flip, so you don't sell passes for streets. You want them to turn over. So somebody doesn't camp out on a street space. And then the fines will do that as well. Properly enforced, fines should be a decent, you know, should incentivize here wanting to hang out all day. But unfortunately, we've not put the kind of enforcement hours, um, that, that we'd like to. I mean, we're doing.
Well, we changed that. We made an order for that. We're in the chamber back.
We've been, yeah, we've increased that the hours, and we're going to do more of that.
Is there other handouts, or we got?
Oh, we got, we got a couple more handouts. Very simple, myself. Not as simple as this.
I'm thinking there's still, I don't have everything that's lost pains on this yet.
Okay, very, these last two are quite simple. You've asked me to look at the tax exempt properties, and you asked me what the taxes were for the chestnut bottling. Chestnut bottling, uh, building, so you, yeah, both of those. Yeah, chestnut bottling, and, um, has been bought by Castle Co. Packers. The first spreadsheet relates to the number of exempt properties in this, this town. The Adelphi discussion got us down the road of wonder what it looks like with all these taxable properties and what we're not getting as far as exemption goes. Uh, this is not for necessarily a discussion at this point, as much as it is for information for council's, uh, edification. Starting with the tax exempt properties, you'll note that in this city, there's about twenty, um, where do we have?
Two-hundred-and-thirty-six.
Yeah, we have about two-hundred-and-thirty-six properties that are exempt. Two-hundred-and-twenty-one acres are exempt. Okay? That represents about fifteen percent of the landmass of the city. As it relates to assessed valuation, uh, I should take a step. That's about six percent of the properties are exempt, about fifteen percent of the landmass. You could think the, the Trove Foundation, Legion Keener is exempt. Big landmass, not a lot of properties. But when you look at the assessed valuation, the total assessed valuation of those properties are twenty-three million dollars, including land and buildings, which represents twenty-six percent of the city's total valuation. So again, though they don't represent a lot of properties numerically, six percent, nor necessarily that much related to landmass, fifteen percent, their value is quite high, as you can imagine with school buildings and hospitals being built at heart, giving you twenty-six percent. And just the last thing for your edification, I wanted to give you an idea of how many employees were employed by these entities. Fif, uh, one thousand, five hundred and ninety-five employees are estimated to be employed by these entities, many of which pay income tax because they live in this city and work in the city. All of them pay fifty-two dollars a year, what we call the local service tax, or the LST tax, and that calculation is provided to the right. So about eight, these entities pay about eighty-three thousand. Related, uh, on, on our LST tax, that is not earned income. Related to notes, Exella owns eighteen properties that are taxed, and they pay, um, about seventy-five hundred on those properties. Adelphi owns seven properties that are taxed. So it's not fair to say that one entity only has tax exempt. They may own a combination of the two. The second handout relates to the chestnut, uh, bottling facility, and stuff you had asked for this last time. Over the last three years, that, uh, Giant Eagles pay about seventy-six thousand dollars in taxes to the city. So if we were to consider exempting them from any sort of taxes for one year, two years, or three years, that's what the net would be to the city. What I did for you under the notes there is calculate the fifty-two-dollar LST tax. Assuming they have a hundred and twenty employees, that's about, uh, the amount that they would be paying would be sixty-two hundred. Why is that important? If we were to choose to exempt them for a year or two of taxes, we would say to the owner, move the lines quicker. Get employment up faster, you know, full employment. Get the building occupied. That, that would be, the carrot would be, we forget taxes, with the idea that they would use a stick to get the employees down here quicker. It would incentivize their moving the bottling lines. So you wanted that information, someone had to provide it for you.
Thank you, Alex.
Um, I think that's, as far as handouts goes, and the last thing just would be my management report. As always, I'm available for, uh, questions. And I love getting the chance to meet with you all, to talk about some of these things. As you can see, there's a whole lot more questions and details that we can cover in a, in an agenda meeting or regularly scheduled council meeting.
Alex, on that seventy-six thousand that we generated from Giant Eagle, that for the three-year period?
That is for the three-year period, correct. That's twenty-five thousand dollars annually. That's approximately the same amount that they paid to the county. During, uh, annually, they paid about eighty-eight thousand or so to the school district.
And that, and that is on the twenty-five million dollars that the property was paid for by Giant Eagle, right?
I don't know what they paid for, but I think Castle Co. Packers paid like two-point-three million.
How much did they pay?
Isn't it three point?
Well, that's repaid for some, but the real, real transfer amount's about two points something.
The two office, they paid five-point-four million, I believe. Now, are, are they going to request a reduction at, at, in taxes in the courthouse that's going to probably lower the amount of money we take?
Typically, when a property transfers at that low price than a previous sale price, or the current assessed price related to this current assessment, they do go for reassessment. Um, I anticipate, one way or the other, that they may, on their own, decide to appeal, or if the city decides to, again, um, as an incentive to moving the product lines and getting the full employment quicker, decide to do something, they may not.
But they'd be crazy not to apply for the reductions, and that's gonna give them a break anyway.
To be honest with you, I don't know, you can report this in the paper. It'd be a good idea. I'll have the time for residents who own property to consider reassessment. I mean, that, that's, that's a right of every property owner to appeal their current assessed valuation. And it happens very frequently in this town, as it does all over, uh, West Millland County. Very good. Any other questions, council?
Thanks. Thanks, Alex.
Okay, that's all I have. Alex, uh, this is Alex.
Regarding the, uh, garbage waste removal contract, if we were to go to option A, uh, are, we have an employee that currently, her sixty percent of her job is handling garbage collections and what have you. Can we be assured that she, you would be able to find additional work for her?
Simple answer is yes.
You know how hard it is to park in tickets?
I like that idea.
Yeah, that's actually, we've started discussing that.
Yeah, okay.
Maybe, that's a good one. And the, uh, one other issue, my favorite, I haven't addressed this in, um, two or three meetings now, the, uh, crosswalks.
I'm gonna be meeting with, um, our solicitor and another solicitor who specializes in construction litigation. I've had initial conversations with this other solicitor, and it, just, let's just say that that meeting will be important, because I'm not so sure we have a, a case that won't be challenging if we do proceed with the, you know, with the crosswalk construction case. But we could follow up on that, and I'd love to have a council member or two sit in on that meeting, just to kind of hear, you know, hear what, you know, what the, the, the thinking is. Why, what's the rationale? My rationale is partly to do with, I think it's gonna be challenging to get another contractor to testify against this particular contractor, and then there's gonna be a lot of an argument, a lot of arguments about specs and other kinds of related issues.
Joe, uh, Joe Bush has a stack of all the stat, uh, specs from that and the testing and all that, and I went and got him, and got him turned over to me and read through him, and that's when I originally brought that back to council. But Joe has a stack of all the specs.
Yeah, I know, yeah. I'm just saying, their attorney's going to.
Their notes.
Do everything they can to rip it up, and sometimes you're at the mercy of a judge who decides to go against you. But I, stuff I'd love to have you in on that meeting, to have, you know, to think this is true. What's the best way to proceed? Because what we do then is incur legal cost, and they don't have a, we don't have a, a sure win. At the end of the day, then the judge will go with us.
Right. What it gives, is almost supposed to control a lot of that, as a result of the, uh, if it's falling apart?
When they do the inspection, they're, they're basic functions controlling the materials.
They, they, for example.
Yeah, they, yeah. They, they, they check when the, the asphalt comes from the plant, there are meters and tanks on the truck. I mean, they're controlling materials. What they cannot control is how a contractor does what he does. That's because they are an independent contractor. We can say, here's the result. We can say, here are the materials you used. But when it comes to how you lay that cement or stuff, no, we don't have that.
And there are, there are some issues.